So Craig asked me to chair the meeting. I'm just going to do the very beginning of this and get a formal vote, just to make sure everybody's okay with me chairing in place of Craig, as I am not the chair, nor am I the co-chair of the committee. So, the chairperson hereby informs the committee and audience members of the recording of this meeting. Role call is Jessica, June, Lisa, Tom, and myself. And the next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School Committee will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 2nd, 2022. I'd like to just call for a vote to make sure that everybody is okay with me chairing in place of Craig. I also would like to have Lisa be a backup chair tonight, as I've had a couple of issues earlier today with my Wi-Fi. And just in case that happens again, we at least had a plan on who's gonna, you know, do the meeting until I can get back in. So, I'm gonna, I'll make the motion that I can, that I have permission to chair this meeting, and Lisa is a backup. Would I have a second for that?
Second.
How second's that? Thank you. And just about on that, Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we will continue. First, on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the approval of minutes from March 7th, 2022, March 21st, 2022, accounts payable warrants, number 22-0317, number 22-0324, number 22-0331, payroll warrants from March 24th, 2022, April 7th, 2022, and donations of $204.80 to Spalding Memorial School from Charity Services LLC for clothing bin, $1,000 to the district from Hanaford Supermarket, 8009 to be used at the district's discretion, and the out-of-field, out-of-state field trip for best buddies members to visit Kenneby Lake in Salem, New Hampshire. Is there anything that needs to get pulled? Okay, I'll take that as a no if I can get a motion for the consent agenda.
Oh, moved? That's Lisa.
Second.
And that was Jessica?
Yes.
Then, Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Anti-vote, yes.
And so does Susan.
Nope, Susan's on now, too. Sorry, it didn't come up on my screen. Let me just figure this out. Okay, so Susan is now here. Okay, so Susan is a yes. Okay. I'll do it while I figure out. Okay. Moving on, we have public communications. We do have two people who are signed up for public communications. A moment while the names come up. The first person is Patrick McPhee. Is he here?
I have a Pat on the list, so I'm gonna allow him to talk.
Okay.
Mr. McPhee?
Hi, yes. Basically, I wanted to find out, I mean, there's still a lot of chatter going back and forth on the school budget. I know you guys have done a good job, but have you been able to reduce it from what you presented to the towns? Because, you know, there's still a lot of chatter going on around that. A lot of some of it's that the towns have felt that they've given you enough, and that you're not getting any more, and that, you know, it kind of like you have to start cutting their saying, "The budget, you have to do something." And I disagree with that, because, you know, to give you that example, it's my town, and they're going out buying a ladder truck, and we haven't had a fire in 15 years. Come on. I think the kids should come first, and there should never be a discussion, which is a major, and that's something I have a call in with Brad scheduled. That's a major issue, to be using funding over an elementary disability child's needs on ADA compliance of the schools. That is one of the biggest things that you could force the Department of Education, US Office of Rights to come in. So you really need to tone these towns down on those issues, because if they don't tone down, and OCI gets a listing of that recording, that's exactly what they said, Brad would have a headache and a half, that would not even, what would happen is, if I'm correct, Brad, you can correct me, it wouldn't be a decision as to one town paying the bill, it would be a decision that the North Middlesex will pay the bill. And that means all three towns would be forced to pay up. So, you really need to tone that down on those schools, and those thrashing people when they raise the issue about that the school needs adjustments is a second major of the three violations. Now, I've been dealing with child advocacy and child rights and adult rights since 1996. So, it kind of is concerning that the boards do not understand you cannot raise money as an issue for a child. And if you do, it's an automatic, it's pretty much a negative thing. Brad, I'll send you the recording of it. The issue is, you know, I spoke to, I'll say, I spoke to OCI about it, and they were really concerned about the town, their statements pertaining to funding, pertaining to that the school has gotten enough, pertaining to just funding in general. And, you know, and as everybody knows, it's irrelevant for a school with, a person with disability or an ADA compliant or a service that needs to be provided for a child within a community, that if you even have to take the federal funds of a building being put up to fix it, they will tell you to take it. And I've seen that on UMass happen. So, you know, and, you know, Brad knows some of the people I deal with, and he'll tell you, you know, they will not be happy about that recording. But saying that, putting that to the side, you know, headaches are headaches. We just need to correct it. We need to stop saying, the communities need to stop saying, especially the town communities and the elected officials need to stop saying, "We've given enough money to this North Middlesex school, we are not giving no more," and then go turn around and buy a truck. That has to stop, because you have a child in need, they come first. And you do not want these or any of them ever to get hearings of that. This is how Lawrence ended up in receivership. And the head, the commissioner for the Department of Education, second in military middle school, took it over as principal, if everybody remembers. So, this is something that you need to, even if you call a meeting, Brad, with all the communities, you need to have them off on this type of conversations about budgetary questions, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Was that all?
Basically, I want to know if you guys have cut the budget back, because that's where this comes about. And when you guys are gonna do the walkthrough of North, Ashby Elementary? They're telling me sometime after the fiscal year.
So, at this point in time, the budget has not been cut back. We're still obviously looking at it, working on it. As far as the walkthrough of Ashby with the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, Finance Committee, it looks like that's going to happen sometime after town meeting. That has been the request.
But that's pushing it out about three years, fiscal years, for this issue to be addressed, Brad.
I understand that. But at this point in time, Pat, it does not look as though we'll be able to get the three, the two committees together, due to short notice and some other obstacles that they're dealing with, with regard to their own budget. So, we did try, and it does not look like it's gonna happen until after, until after the Ashby town meeting.
My concern, Brad, and I'm gonna be very honest to everybody, is my concern is they're buying two trucks on this warrant, on this town meeting. And that's, that's gonna be another $400,000 before, and then all these people are gonna be asked to come to another special town meeting to fund the repairs of that school, and you're gonna get a no. This is where people don't know about this before the warrants are being voted on. And so my concern is, is that if it does have to go to state and federal, if federal's gonna tell North Middle, tell Townsend and Pepper, "Only up the money, bear it, I'll fix it, because you're all part of one school district."
Okay. Well, Pat, whereas I appreciate, you know, that information, we are aware, and we're doing the best that we can to bring this to the towns' attentions, but we do need to work with everybody's schedules, as well as, and I don't want to have to cut you short here, but you've been speaking for about five minutes, as well as there's a better forum for this, that we can go more in-depth if we need to. This comment section is just for comments, like I said, we appreciate you bringing the information to the committee, and we will certainly see what we can do. Susan, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, since the last time we cut the budget, we haven't cut it further, but we have had, correctly, I'm wrong, Brad, two or three reductions since the original budget that was proposed.
I think there have been two.
Okay.
Since the original budget's been proposed.
Right. Thank you. And thank you for your support, Pat, I appreciate that.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second person signed up for public comment, and that's Jennifer Kingsbury.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I'm really just checking back in to see what, what, if anything, has happened since the meeting on March 21st, when the petition to reinstate middle school foreign language, in-person middle school foreign language instruction was submitted. And also just to encourage the school committee to create a working group on this topic, as was mentioned as a possibility at the last meeting. And that was really all I had to say. I think I've brought everything I possibly could to your attention, and I'll just sit back and listen. Thank you.
Okay, it is on the agenda later on, so we will be discussing what has been done and what our further actions are then. Thank you. And that is all that we have, the signed up for public. So we will continue on the agenda, which the chairperson's report, Craig did not give me anything in particular. So, is the student rep on, Robin? Do you see?
I do not see the student on there, Randy.
Okay. I don't either, I just wanted to make sure I'm looking in the right place. Okay, then we'll go on to the superintendent's report. Brad?
I also just have, I'm just speaking to items tonight that are on the agenda, which are part of my report.
Okay.
So I'll wait until they get them on the agenda.
Well, that would be the very next thing, which is old business, the FY23 budget update.
Yeah, so again, really not much to update with regard to that. You know, it is something that we are continuing to look at, continuing to monitor numbers in our schools with regard to class size, but there really has been, really has not been any movement at this time with regard to the, to the budget that was presented in March and approved by the school committee. So we are still basically in the same spot. Nancy Haynes, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
No, I think, you know, we'll continue to keep looking at everything over the next few weeks before town meetings start.
And we will obviously do what we can, but as of now, there have not been reductions.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. We have the petition for the reinstatement of middle school foreign languages. Nancy Milligan?
Thank you. From our last meeting, it was asked of the administration to come back and talk a little bit more about the implementation, what the program would look like. So our proposal would be to continue to contract with the World of Language for Grade 8 for the Spanish 1 course. In order to provide this program to the students, students would receive two days of live instruction during the Patriot Time. Instruction has occurred in the library with the librarian as a facilitator or liaison with the company, and helps the students with contacting the instructor in between sessions. There's no certification required of the company to be the liaison in this capacity. The World of Language instructors are available and have been very timely in the requests with student needs on the three days that they do not receive live instruction. The role of the liaison is to help the students stay on task with the independent work and the four assignments that are required of them. The four assignments that the students work on independently past the two days of instruction include explain, which is a discussion post that the students post as part of their cohort, evaluating the material, which has a quiz or some, or some other type of assessment associated with it, elaborate their knowledge through a small group project and/or assessment, and to express themselves reflecting upon what they've learned this week. Students work in a cohort model on individual and group projects to support each other, and with help from the instructor. World of Language does follow the Massachusetts, Desi State Curriculum Frameworks, which aligns to our current programming at the high school. The company adheres to the same outcomes and standards it created in its programming and outcomes. One of the questions that came up is how can World of Language provide the same outcomes in two days' worth of instruction when North Middlesex was doing it within five? So when we look at the outcomes that we're looking for students in Spanish, it's twofold. First off, we want to make sure that the students come, arrive at the same outcome. And why World of Language can do this versus districts such as North Middlesex or other districts is we really have to think about how we program our students and assign them to sections within our school day, along with hiring staff members. So, the best possible model for North Middlesex is to hire a full-time Spanish teacher and keep them fully subscribed. As North Middlesex has had extreme difficulty in procuring the number of Spanish instructors it needs at both middle schools, finding part-time instructors would not be able to be fulfilled at all. World of Language is able to meet the outcomes and be more flexible with its scheduling with students, and over their 20 years of providing this model of instruction have found success with two days of live instruction, along with up to three days of follow-up activity. So while World of Language could support a number of districts at the same time, North Middlesex, the best model for us is to have a full-time employee, because we wouldn't be able to find or locate part-time employees to be able to meet these same needs on a unified arts rotation, which we have it. Students will still have the dedicated time three days a week, along with the two days of live instruction, and this rotates through the eight unified arts classes that the students have. And students can take anywhere from one to three days to complete their assignments. If students finish their assignments in one to two days, then that third day of live instruction, the live application would not be necessary. So, NISATISA has been extremely flexible with their scheduling for students to make sure that whatever's going on in other unified arts courses are considered when they're thinking about providing this time for the students. Our ultimate plan would be to expand foreign language opportunities and choices in our programming for next year. We'd like to survey the parents next fall and look at additional languages that are of interest at both the middle and high school level, and look at adding that to our programming the following year. We'd look to, we want to make sure that as we add languages, we have enough interest that we can have a cohort model, so students can work together, as that seems to be the ideal method and model that's promoted from the company. So from last week's, two weeks ago, our meeting, follow-up questions and having the World of Language presentation on March 28th, I believe, that was sent out, we hope that we have answered any of the questions that the school committee might have. I do have Lauren Young on the phone, along with the Assistant Principal Chantel Olmsted from Hoffmanbrook. Are there any specific questions from the school level?
Does anybody have any questions for Nancy? Susan? You're on mute.
Yeah, the raise, hitting the raising hand button doesn't help you be able to speak, I've learned. The, what I was saying was, one clarification, one comment, is do students miss other opportunities? Is this like a choice from several opportunities? Like, is it, is it band or Spanish? Is it performing arts or Spanish?
It doesn't pull from one unified arts, it will pull from all eight. So over the course of the year, depending on how many additional sections that the students would need, it would rotate through. It first starts, and Lauren or Chantel, correct me if I'm wrong, but first would pull from the PE class, because there's two PE classes a week, and then depending on what other unified arts classes have going on, they would look at where the, where additional time could be pulled from. So yes, it would be replacing something, but does not replace a whole course, so students would still get the other eight courses. So if projects lead the way in our STEM class, or in our technology class, or in music head, something that they wouldn't want to pull students from, we wouldn't pull from that section that week.
Right, and we never pull from band or chorus, because we know that's important, and we want our students to have their performing arts box, so we don't pull them from that to go to Spanish.
So do they have a choice that they could do the applied portion outside of the school day to be able to attend more of the unified arts?
They can, and if they're not in band or chorus, they can use that time for Spanish as well.
Okay. And I guess my comment is, I've got a couple of kids at the college level right now, and I certainly see them going, well, whether we're talking pandemic or current, getting instruction live, whether to the video or in-person, depending on where we are in the pandemic, you know, two days a week, and then applying that material outside of that on their own. So, I think that that flexibility, I certainly see them benefit from that flexibility, and to see that they get more opportunities during the school day, that's appealing to me, and seeing the success of learning, having direct instruction two days a week, and applying it as it fits the schedule and their choices. So, it's not unheard of, certainly not traditionally, what we've done. And I'm learning a lot about how that works for middle school kids, and, I mean, it's a lot of trade-offs, I've learned in my years in the committee, where you're trying to do what's best for kids within the limitations of budgets and otherwise. This, I'll be interesting to see. I think one of the things I learned in my own career is that you understand the goal, and then you let the people that can engineer that goal, whether it's educators or IT people or engineers, find a way to meet that goal using their expertise. So this, it sounds like our goal is to have students ready to start the high school at Spanish 2, if they so choose, or they can still go to the high school and start Spanish 1 if they so choose. Because taking Spanish eighth grade is a choice under the current proposal, right?
Yes, it's optional.
So they have the opportunity to choose the path that makes sense for them, and they can choose where they start high school, Spanish 1 or Spanish 2?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And I think part of the hope, that too, is that this program, if it's something that we find success with, could open up, could open up other languages as well.
Right.
Whether it be Mandarin, or Japanese, or something along those lines, you know, just to increase the offerings that are at the high school, if it's something that we find successful.
Because I remember, at the high school level, French was more highly subscribed when there was a choice at the middle school level between French and Spanish, and then when there wasn't a choice, it was all Spanish. High school was, I mean, excuse me, Spanish was a much more popular choice moving to the high school, because the students felt they have an understanding of it and didn't have to start fresh on another language. So, I do think it's an opportunity to expose the kids to more, and allow those students who don't feel their strength is world language, other options. And obviously, the parents are going to help them make the choice. They're not 18, but not able to decide for themselves what classes they're going to take. So, no, mixed emotions for sure. I can see the benefits, I can see the concerns, but I also trust the experts when we set the goal of what, what we're trying to do to help us get there.
Susan, you bring up a good point, that families have some flexibility. We found that when we did offer Spanish for some of the eighth graders every single day, that come October, we would have many families reaching out to us to ask if their child had to continue with Spanish, or was there another option for them, because their child was overwhelmed with it. So once they get past the numbers and the alphabet, and they get into grammatical structure, that having a fifth core content class was just too much, especially for students who might struggle with English or math, they wanted a different option for their child. So having this option, you know, it's right for some and right for others, and, you know, we have the programs at NISATISA, so Spanish, you know, isn't right for all the students in our special education programs, so it gives us a little bit of flexibility for, to meet the needs of our students.
And I did want to publicly apologize that I believe some of my, I didn't, I wasn't very clear the last time we discussed this as a group. I had made a comment regarding not focusing, not dwelling on the past, and that comment was not directed to the parents that are heavily involved in bringing this to our attention, those that signed the petitions. It was trying to provide clarification to our administration to spend the time putting together the documentation regarding what we do today and what we're gonna do in the future, and for the district administration not to spend the time trying to detail out how we got here and what the history was, because I think it was more beneficial for our administration to spend time going forward and making plans, rather than trying to go back and explain and defend what the past was, because the past happened. I think there, we talked about this last time, so definitely some lessons learned about communication and such, and taking the opportunity to, I don't know, what's the right word, post-mortem or something, to look at that and learn some lessons, for sure, but just to spend our energies currently and in the future, directed at the district, not the, the parents that have put so much work on, on this to bring this to our attention.
The only other thing I wanted to add is that, having the child that graduated from college, myself, and one that's in college now, I do think that the pandemic component of exposing students to more offerings of remote learning definitely has shown us that we do need to give kids some experience in that area, because it's more convenient for students, it's more convenient for professors to be able to teach, to be able to teach a class from home, and it is something that colleges are continuing to do and will likely continue to do moving forward, and it's something that many are recommending, that students get exposed to some type of remote learning moving forward, because it's something that they'll likely have to experience in college, if that's the route they choose to take. And we'll give them the experience and the exposure of it.
Anybody have any other comments or questions? I'd like to say myself, one, thank you for the administration for continuing to look at world language after we had the discussions that we needed to make a decision to have it in the middle schools or not, and unfortunately, with the tough decision, when we couldn't find-
the tough decision when we couldn't find teachers, it really did, I I I think bother a lot of people that we couldn't offer world language. And this is a great option that we didn't know about that time. So thank you for continuing to look for something and finding something that we have the potential to actually possibly make even better than what we had in place before. I definitely look forward to the evaluation at the end of this year. Hopefully, we can have better enrollment next year so we can have a larger group go through this and have more data to take a look at and see how successful the program actually is. But I am looking forward to possibility of, you know, more languages in the district. It's just very exciting. As far as for the school committee, the reason I had made the motion the last time to have this detailed description brought to us, because at that time when we were being asked to take a look at possibly reinstating world language at the middle school or what we were going to do, I did not have a full understanding of the program that was in place. So it was kind of hard to really talk to the the parents that had brought that petition to us. I feel I'm in a much better place to look at the options and respond to that petition now. Hopefully, everybody else feels the same way. Could I'd like to, you know, at least discuss with everybody what our next steps should be with this program. Obviously, the administration is recommending it for the next two to three years to take a look and see how it works in the district and how we can expand it. As a school committee, is there anything else that we want them to do? Are we happy with the program going forward? Are there any, you know, working groups that we think we should put together now, put together at another point to evaluate this? Get a little bit of feedback from everybody on that. Anybody have any thoughts? Okay. Then I will go ahead and my thoughts are that I I think it's exciting. I think we should go ahead and approve this for this year. Obviously, we're in it and next year it has the option for parents to have their children have a language. It's flexible enough for our schedule as it is. And for teachers that we can actually bring in to hire, we don't have to hire anybody for this and end up having, you know, virtual anyway for some sections like we did the last time. At the end of next year, because we have such a low turnout right now, I would like to get back together with the administration and hear about the progress. The couple of students that are taking it this year, maybe get a report about how they did in their freshman year. Hear about hopefully many more students taking it next year and how the course worked for them. If there's any improvements, any feedback from the parents and the and students on the program. And then from there, kind of decide whether this is something to keep in the district or if we need to reevaluate how to offer world language in the middle school. Okay. Do I have agreement with that? Would people like to maybe add something different? Do we want to make a motion on this just for the administration to reconvene at the end of next year to bring the information to us? Or is that too far out?
I think we're going to need to make some decisions in time for the budget cycle.
Okay.
We won't have the full information you're asking for by then, I don't think. What will we know by January of next year? Brad has his hand up. I don't know if he already has an answer for that.
I was just gonna say I I again, I see Nancy's hand is up and she's certainly better equipped to answer this than I. But I would just say that obviously, I I do think the budget would play a a role in it if, you know, one way or the other. So I think that we would need to have some information. Nancy, do you have any any thoughts on that as to when we should be evaluating evaluating it?
Sure, in my in the end of my recommendations of the school committee, I looked at that I would like two full years to look at data, so this would not be impacting next year's budget conversations at all, but we'll be looking at implementing next year and the year after to give us a good eighteen months. And two cohorts, this cohort next year, and then a half a cohort at least before making any decisions. I think that because we had such low turnout this year for this program, possibly based on lack of clear communication or expectations based on our former online program and the dislike for it, I'll say nicely. I think that we have to give see where we go for enrollment next year. Look at what happened this year, look what happened next year, and then look at the following year. If for a budget conversation, but I do not think that you're going to have enough information by January of next year with only having a second cohort halfway done. So my recommendation would be to do nothing for next year within the budget cycle and make this a multi-year plan. I do think that we're putting out possibly next April to from the student's perspective, along with seeing a common assessment in place between the district and the company that's fully in place that we know what we want for outcomes for Spanish two going into the high school. Would be good information to have that all in place because we're just working through those details now. So I would like to make sure that we have at least one full cohort of students for that information. So I would recommend to push this out a following year and not do any action for next year's budget would make the most sense. Remember that yes, anything that you want, three to five years. So I would do a minimum of three years. If you want to count this year one, then year two, and then looking at that third year, that's even somewhat premature, but I think that you could at least have that starting conversation. Because if it's not going well, then we can plan for a shift. And if it is going well, then you can plan where you'd like to go from there. But I think bringing in another language also and balancing that would be something that would entice parents. So but I think that you're always looking at three to five years to get anything sustain going and five to seven to sustain.
Okay. Tom, you had your hand up a couple of times. Did you still have something you wanted to say?
No, it was it was the the budget piece, obviously, if if that was something we were looking at, it would probably have to be sooner than this time of the year next year. And, you know, obviously, if looking at I think what's it, you know, the the projections would be two teachers at each school, like, you know, also scheduling, you know, so the schools would also have to consider the scheduling component to that, too. And that, I mean, that starts early early in this earlier in the square than I think people anticipate, too. So but the I mean, Brad and Nancy kind of addressed that, so just reiterating.
Susan? The are there other, okay, I'm off mute. To help us with our assessment, could are there other districts we're aware of that use this model and perhaps even this company? It provides the service where we could maybe get feedback sooner based on their experiences. And I don't know how much we can relate another district's experiences to ours as far as outcomes.
So the only thing I can add to that, Susan, and again, I'll I'll let Nancy speak to the state part, but we actually heard of World of Language through the National Superintendent's Roundtable because foreign language has been a difficulty nationwide, finding qualified licensed people. In this company came up is being at this current time the best option from what other people nationally had experienced because of the option of two and up to three days of live instruction, which many of the online programs do not do not offer any online instruction at all where it's live. So that's where we heard about World of Language from. We did have some other options as well, but there would be no live instruction with those other options as of right now. And again, it was on a national level, it's become somewhat of an issue. Nancy, do you want to speak to other options at the state level in Massachusetts? From any of your colleagues, if you've if you've heard anything?
That's what I was going to say, Brad, that we we went back to the national conference to get this information. And a lot of the other districts in Massachusetts tend to use our former company, knowing that what Brad just said, there's no live instruction. So we can reach back out to the company. The company's been doing this for about twenty years. So we can see which districts have been onboarded recently and and others that they have longstanding relationships with and see if we can get any additional information from Dr. Is it Mo Mulroy? Am I saying that right, Lauren? Mulroy.
Just thinking that if there, if there's other districts, especially Massachusetts, that are kind of ahead of us, they're able to give that feedback on this success of their students at the high school level, meeting standards.
So actually, we, Mrs. Young and I were talking right before the meeting, and we do not think that there's actually many Massachusetts, if any, districts. Lauren felt that the Pennsylvania might be the closest state that has this running consistently.
And Ohio is another one, Pennsylvania and Ohio are the two largest subscribers right now to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to see if there was a way to get a jumpstart on at least a peak of an evaluation and someone close by.
Okay. So does everybody feel just that the timeline that Nancy laid out and we'll just check back in? I don't think we need to have any kind of a working group. There's not much to really do other than keep it on our agenda to get the information when it's appropriate. So as long as we just keep it on our agenda, maybe for an update next October on what the enrollment is for the year, kind of keep it in our thoughts and what we're doing. You know, and just, you know, small updates like that on on, you know, where the program is until we can get data to share would be nice.
I mean, I sure wish there was a faster, easier way to understand this. I feel like we have a lot of constraints in place. I don't see a way around them myself.
Yeah, no, I agree, Susan. But again, it's better than not having any kind of world language at this point, and it's better than the the fully virtual that we've had before that we saw that the students didn't respond to. So okay. Then being that nobody has any motions to make, we'll just keep it, like I said, on the agenda and get some updates and any data when appropriate. If there's no other comments, then we'll move on on the agenda to the new business. We have the Keystone Educational Collaborative lease. Brad?
Yes, so thank you. And I am looking for some guidance from the school committee on this. The Keystone Collaborative currently uses just about half of the Squanah Cook building, currently using twelve classrooms, the cafeteria, and the gymnasium. And again, that lease is set to expire in August. We have had discussions or I have had discussions with John Demench, the executive director from Keystone. And through those discussions, he has decided to pull the middle school program from Squanah Cook, which would free up four of the twelve classrooms, essentially freeing up the second floor of Squanah Cook after this current lease runs out. But he is still looking for a three-year lease for the elementary component, which is downstairs, taking up again the other eight classrooms, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, as well as one of the playgrounds that are on site. And I I guess from the from my perspective, what I need to know from the committee is, we have the Collin Center that is going to be sharing their findings with us in May with regard to the various buildings in the district. And they are based on my meeting with them today, we we toured Ashby again, we toured Spalding, and then we toured Squanah Cook. They are going to be presenting at this point in time, I believe, four different options to the district that they see as potential solutions to the school district. The question I have is, or what's putting me in a difficult position, is that any lease that goes beyond one year could be impacted significantly if the school committee and the towns decide to go with two options, two of the four options. Because if the decision is made to, for instance, you know, the the worst case scenario would be to to close Ashby or to potentially redistrict students in some way, shape, or form, Squanah Cook would be needed. We would need the, we would need the gymnasium, we would need the cafeteria, we would have to essentially retrofit and modernize the cafeteria as far as the the cooking area. The classrooms are fine, but the decision, you know, ultimately, those twelve classrooms would need to be utilized for Ashby Elementary School if that decision were made by the committee and by the towns. And I think we've reached a point where we are going to be sharing the findings with the three towns and asking obviously what Ashby's opinion is. But what I don't want to do is put the district in a difficult spot by signing a three-year lease when we may need that building in a year or two years. And three years is, three years could be too much. And I I certainly don't want to put the Keystone Collaborative, who have really been great tenants and, you know, they've been great to work with in a difficult situation where they're left scrambling for spots for students as well. Because their properties are very difficult to come by. So at this point in time, again, a three-year lease is on the table. But I'm just not sure until until we hear from what the Collin Center has to say on May sixteenth, when they will share their findings, whether or not we should be considering a three-year lease or perhaps a shorter lease if, again, the committees and towns opt to go with a different with one of the four options that does not include keeping Ashby open.
Susan? You're on mute. Susan, you're on mute.
Thank you. I spent the whole day, you think I on Zoom calls, you think I'd learn. I talk a lot, so I'm just, if anyone else has something to say, I'll stand by.
Susan, can I just pose a question? Again, I'm not sure if this would be helpful. I I can briefly sketch out the four potential options that they are looking at right now, and that may help clarify. Again, I don't want, it's unofficial because they were out in the district again today. I I brought them around, but I don't know if that would be helpful to the committee to hear what the potential options are that they're exploring now. I would, I guess, at the end of the committee.
I'm always extremely curious because I love that sort of thing to to long on, but let me ask my questions first before you tell us that.
Okay.
But okay.
Sure.
One question is, what are the termination terms of that agreement from if they would like to end early? Or if we would like to end early, how does that work in the contract? Presuming there's a three year and they want to say, oh, we found something closer. Because I remember them saying that they're looking long term to have everything consolidated a little bit closer to each other, which is not here.
Yes.
I know that they've left the high school where they had a program, and now they're looking to pull out the middle school. I don't know how fast they're looking to pull out the elementary school, which is what we're talking about right now. So I just was curious how the logistics of pulling out early, either us asking for that or them wanting to in the contract.
So Nancy Haynes is on as well, and she's been working with the attorney on the lease. Nancy, do you have? I don't believe there's anything in our current lease. And you are right, Susan, they are looking to move all of their programs closer to the Lemonster-Fitchburg area because that's where the majority of the students are from. And they thought that they would be doing that within the three-year time period. So Nancy, I don't know if anything in the current lease from Attorney Foskett aligns that?
Okay, just give me a minute to look at that. I think there is some language in there, but it's, you know, it's a multi-page page document. I don't know it off the top of my head, so I don't know if you want to continue and I'll I'll try and then we'll just find it.
Because if there's a graceful way to exit for either party, I'm interested in
Sure.
continuing to collect the financial benefits of having them in the building. I don't want to kick them out. But if they're looking to leave anyway as soon as possible, I'm just curious how that works for both sides to terminate.
Okay.
Well, Nancy's looking that up. Did you have another question, Susan? Well, Nancy's looking that up. Did you have another question, Susan?
No, they were the two things about termination and the comment about how they're trying to consolidate quickly and.
Sure. So again, while Nancy's looking that up, I can quickly go over, again unofficially, what the Collin Center is looking at right now. Would that be acceptable, Randy?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so again, they're looking at four options. Option one is to keep Ashby open. Demolish the vacated wing and address all of the items on the capital list up to and including any type of code issues that come up as a result of that. So that's option one. Option two that they are looking at is to basically take the front of the building minus the gymnasium area and completely either renovate or demolish that and build behind that. Essentially a new main office area, new nurses suite, bring the cafeteria upstairs, the library, computer labs and specialist classrooms, renovate the gym and then connect that to the new classrooms that were put up a couple decades ago. And keep the building open while that's happening. But basically, in the summer, put the foundations in of the new structure, put the walls up and then be working inside the new structure while school is operating. And then once that component is done, remove the front of the building and then you'll have a brand-new front of Ashby, a newly renovated gymnasium, new main office area, new library, new cafeteria, new main office suite, nurse, all of that. So that's option two. Option three would be to close Ashby and move Ashby to Squanah Cook, which means we would need those classrooms at Squanah Cook. And we would have to do some work. The only real work that would need to be done would be in the cafeteria, to my knowledge. And then option four would be to, obviously, again, close Ashby and then make Squanah Cook kindergarten and first grade for Ashby and Townsend, keep the preschool in the second half of the building and move second, third and fourth grade to Spalding for Ashby and Townsend. So the second two options are the ones that would really need to be, if that, again, this is something that's going to, you know, the regional agreement is going to be involved with this, the school committee is going to be involved with this, the towns are going to be involved with this. But ultimately, the second two options would require the full use of all of the areas that Keystone is currently occupying. So I think, hopefully, that will explain why Squanah Cook would be needed.
Okay. And is there a timeline? Should options three or four be what's chosen by everybody? Is there a timeframe that that has to happen in or is it possible to say, okay, well, we've decided to do this, let's prepare for and do this in, you know, three years?
No, so the only things that are somewhat of an issue right now are, and some of the committee members are aware of this, is that at Ashby, if that vacated wing is not demolished soon, a new roof is likely going to be needed on that structure to protect the electrical in that wing because that also does feed the main building as well. An oil tank needs to be removed. A second boiler, right now, it's the only building in the district, I believe, that's working on a single boiler. And they do recommend two boilers for every building. So we did put in a new boiler two years ago, I believe, two or three, and we currently have the second boiler, which does need to be replaced. So remove to replace, which is costly, and then the potential for the handicap lift, which goes down into the cafeteria, if by chance we're unable to, you know, find parts for that, then we would need to put in a new handicap lift immediately just to be compliant. So those are some of the things that we would have to look at in the immediate future, which, you know, if the decision is made to go with option three or four, well, then that money has been spent to put something off for a couple of years and we won't be able to recoup that money. That's really the only, to me, the only negative in waiting is that there are certain capital items at Ashby that need to happen sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, it does. Tommy, add your hand up.
Thanks, Randy. Is Keystone at all open to a short release? I know, you know, they're looking three, like, I just, I worry about whatever the different options are. I mean, you know, if we're renovating and kids are moving, I mean, can we use Squanah Cook for kids at Ashby temporarily while constructions? Like, I just would prefer for the district to have the flexibility if, you know, if we need it.
Right. So as far as Keystone being open to it, I don't think they'd be thrilled with it. But I think that if they were told that they had another year and that's all that they had, that it's something, they're certainly not prepared at this point in time to move the elementary school next year. And again, that's not something where we are a member of the Keystone Collaborative. It's just not something that, to me, should really be being looked at at this point in time. And no matter what plan ends up being the plan that we go with to move forward, it's going to take time to implement it to make sure that it's done the right way. And Squanah Cook right now isn't, I mean, right now Hawthorne Brook is supplying lunch for Keystone. So there's certainly a way to provide lunch to Squanah Cook if a decision had to be made immediately, say for next year or something. But to me, if we're going to do something the right way, we need to explore everything and make sure that we have everything in place for whichever plan that we have, so that it's the best plan possible moving forward.
But it sounds like, but it sounds like three years is too much.
Excuse me?
But it sounds like three years might be too much potentially, right?
Three years would only be too much if, if option three or four is chosen. If option three or four is chosen, then three years is too much. It's possible that two years would be too much just because of the, there are some pressing capital items at Ashby that need to happen soon. If we're going to keep the building open. And again, those items would be the boiler, the lift, the roof and the oil tank. Those four items, all of which are fairly costly, and there could be some code issues as well that are instituted due to that work.
Thank you.
Lisa, you were next.
With option two, you were saying that they would not have to move the Ashby students around in the district? They'd be able to.
On my conversation today would be doing some of the, putting up the shell of the building and the foundation in the summer and then enclosing it and then obviously doing, doing the work inside at that point during the school day. That is something that many school districts do when they do a renovation. But in all honesty, Ashby's in a situation where the classrooms are in very good shape. And that's, that's just not my opinion. That's based on several people that have gone through the building. They're, they're actually quite large, they're in good shape, they're well-maintained. So it would be more or less keeping the building operational and all of the construction work would be happening either outside the building or inside the new shell of what would become the front of the building. Does that make sense, Lisa?
Yes. This would impact the playground because the playground is right there. Is that correct?
The playground's in the back. There's the playground, the driveway area behind the abandoned wing, but the play structure and things are in the back. So there does seem to be enough property there where they could make some adjustments if need be, if a building project was going to take place. But that, I'm sorry, just, I don't mean to interrupt, but if Squanah Cook would be an option, if we just wanted to move the students out for a period of time to eliminate any disruptions at all if there was a construction project going on.
Well, knowing how construction projects sometimes go, it would be nice to have a place where we can put our students and house them.
Yes. Agree.
I'm muted. You're on mute.
Yeah, I just didn't know if Lisa had something else to say.
I'm good.
Okay. Randy or? Oh my gosh, Nancy Haynes, you guys were probably here and remember, what was being done at Ashby that we needed to, we moved the kids to Squanah Cook for whatever it was, a year or two? Was that the gym project or roof?
We did a, what was called a green, green repair grant there and we did a roof and windows and doors. And it was for, I believe, the school year 2012.
Okay, it was just one school year that we relocated Ashby to Squanah Cook?
Yes, I think it started in the summer before 2012 and they attended Squanah Cook that year.
Okay.
And while I'm unmuted here, I didn't see termination language in the contract except for if the building became unusable for some reason. Like there was a major failure of something, a boiler, I don't know, something along those lines. So there is some language about that, but there is, at the moment, and that doesn't mean there couldn't be, that could be a conversation, but I don't, you know, I think they're going to need a full school year. It's hard to move students that quickly. So even if we did come up with language for a termination clause, I'm, I'm pretty sure it would probably be the end of the school year and we'd have to give notice by a certain date. Brad, would you expect that?
I would expect that, yes.
Yeah.
How many classrooms does the current student population in Ashby need? Assuming it's at least 10. I don't remember. That doesn't include the specials. Is there two sections per grade?
Not including specials, is it? I'm just, I'm doing it in my head, hold on.
Right. If there's two sections per grade, they'd need 10. That's just regular classrooms. And the other comment I had while you were adding that up, I've never seen projects move quickly. So I would be surprised if there was enough momentum to even think about moving students quickly. Everything seems to go really slow, not just because of us, but the whole process we must follow with the state, whether we're looking for money from them or whether we're looking to use, go with the bidding process, et cetera.
Right. So Nancy Milligan, correct me if I'm wrong, you're coming up with seven classrooms right now without specials.
That's what I thought too. Yeah, this year's, there's seven classrooms.
The next year it's going to be six, correct?
Currently looking at six. Then I would look at a special education classroom or two because I think that there's two special education teachers. I don't know if they split a spot right now or not, and that's not looking at specialists.
I didn't know if we could relocate the central office and still have room for the collaborative and Ashby students while we're renovating. Maybe we don't want to mix programs for the gym and the cafeteria. I don't know enough about that, whether we'd need separate gym space and separate cafeteria space, but it just didn't, didn't know if it would all fit.
Okay. No, and I can certainly explore that. And just to answer your question, Susan, any type of building project, I think we're probably looking at, again, option one or, I mean, option two would be longer. We're probably looking in the range of five to eight years. Nancy and I do have a call on Wednesday with MSBA just to talk about whether or not Ashby would even qualify for an MSBA project. So we do have a call scheduled with that individual on Wednesday of this week. Just to see again what our options are with, so that it's not something that is on the towns.
And I didn't mean necessarily the length of project, I just mean how long it takes to actually, you know, shovel out the ground, knocking walls down and stuff.
Right.
Which certainly wouldn't start this fall.
No.
I wouldn't think.
No, we'd have to apply. If MSBA were considered, we'd have to apply with it.
I guess we have to consider the loans that are currently out on the building and the money MSBA gave us and what the impacts there are. I think you have to keep the building in use for a certain number of years after they give you money and there's consequences.
Right.
Brad, being that we will hopefully have a direction sometime this year as far as what, well, what the decision for Ashby is on these three, on these four options or if there's a fifth option out there. What about offering up and do you think they would be receptive to a one-year lease with a two-year renewal? We'll let them know before the end of this year so they can plan. In this way, if the decision goes to closing Ashby and we're going to need Squanah Cook next year, we don't renew for the two years, we let them know that. Otherwise, they can have it for the three years while we're doing all the planning and trying to get everything going.
Sure. That's certainly something we can look at and we do have some, you know, the way the lease works, it's August to August. So certainly I would think by August of this year, we would have some idea as to what option we're leaning towards. So we would be able to reach out to them and let them know, you know, this is what we're doing. We can either extend or we're going to have to, you know, end early or something along those lines. And I do think John would certainly be appreciative of that. He knows that there may be a need for Squanah Cook in the future. And he also knows, you know, that the other piece is, is that Squanah Cook provides flexibility for any type of project that we want to do if we want to do any reservation, renovations at Hawthorne Brook as well. You know, having that flexibility is helpful for the district, certainly. So Nancy and I can explore that to see if we can get some flexibility within the lease and do one year. If that's something the committee thinks is something we should be entertaining and then see if we can have some flexibility in year two and possibly even year three.
Yeah, I would love to see us get the income if we don't need the building.
Yes.
As long as they want to be there. But being that we're not going to have the answers on Ashby before we have to sign the lease, I think that might be a good compromise to say, you got it for one year and we're going to let you know as soon as possible on the next two years.
Agreed. Thank you.
I just can't imagine we'd have the funding lined up to do anything in Ashby, any of the four. Well, I guess option one or two would be funding lined up.
Right.
Yes.
And in the case of those, they could have it for the three years. But in the case, if we're going to close down Ashby, we don't want to be caught a couple of years in and having to put money into the boiler or something like that on an emergency basis, knowing that we're going to be closing the school if those options are chosen.
And what the decisions were last time we did those renovations, what made it so we moved the students out? That probably allowed the project to move a lot faster and the students could go back to Ashby a lot faster. So I think at some point, we're going to, no matter, all four options are going to involve the use of Squanah Cook at some point.
It could.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions? And Brad, you're good with what was discussed?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is substitute nurse pay, Brad?
Yes, we have Catherine Hampson on the line, so she will speak to it. I just want to give the committee a little bit of background. Currently, our substitute nurse pay is, is really not competitive with other districts and obviously during the pandemic and the fact that it looks like it's going to potentially emerge again in the fall. We do need to make sure that, that we do have licensed nurses in our buildings. And right now we're struggling to find substitutes. So Catherine did a pretty extensive study around what other districts are paying and has a recommendation for what North Middlesex should be considering. So I'll turn it over to Catherine at this point.
Hi. So I did a fairly extensive search. I think I got information from about 45 different districts. And they are a little bit all over the place for what they pay, but most of, all of the districts have come up to the vicinity of $200 a day. With the exception of a few that pay quite a bit more than that, but they're like Boston Public Schools or Worcester and they have, they're competing with the big hospitals there and there's just no way they can get subs without it. We currently pay $125 a day. I'm recommending that we go to $200 a day. It's the only way that we can hopefully secure additional substitutes. It's just not. It, it's just not, when you look at the responsibilities that they take on and the license that they're required to have and they need to carry their own malpractice insurance, when you're asking them for $125 a day to risk that, it, it just doesn't weigh out for them. And I've had several that have said to me, you know, when we've been talking, if you can increase the pay, I can, you know, I can say no to the hospital to doing per diem there or I can adjust my hours other places. But they just feel that the risk is not worth it for the, the pay that we have at this point in time. We have had an unusual year with a lot of, between COVID and health issues. We've had a lot of absences this year. And fortunately, because of our staffing level right now, we've been able to float coverage quite a bit. But there still are a lot of days that you need subs. And I literally just got a call from one of the nurses whose child has COVID and now she's out the rest of the week. So I, I just, I know that we need, we need to have a bigger, more robust substitute pool. And the, and I really believe that one of the ways to get that is to raise the salary or the pay rate for the subs to $200 a day. And then we're at least competitive with Fitchburg, what Fitchburg's paying, what Gardner's paying, what Lemonstr's paying their subs. And hopefully would be able to increase our sub pool.
Any comments or questions for Catherine? Or comments on raising the pay or a motion on what we should do? Susan?
I make a motion to increase the substitute nurse pay to what Catherine said, and that was 200?
200, yes.
I second that.
And that was Jessica seconding. Any comments or questions before we vote?
I just wanted to say that it's an extremely important, you know, it's a safety issue and we have very few per building. I, I don't see that we have any other option. We've been struggling for a long time. I've been hearing for many years, it's difficult to get substitute nurses.
Especially in this time when there's so much extra work on them with COVID and screening, things like that.
This is an issue pre-COVID.
It was an issue, probably, but my guess is that COVID probably exasperated how many absences we have as well as the amount of work for substitute to walk into right now. So are we ready to vote? Okay, Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. We will raise the nurse pain. Good luck with getting substitute nurses, Catherine.
Thank you very much.
Stipend positions, Brad?
We have Principal McMahon from the high school, who's also on the call and looking to get approval for two stipends at the high school. Just to give, give a little bit of a background, both of these have been running and they're not currently identified in the teacher's contract. And obviously, the goal for me is to make sure that the teachers are compensated. That being said, I have asked the union to make sure that if this is going to continue and we're going to continue to broaden the amount of opportunities to students after school, which is something I think we should be doing, if we can do it, that we need to be made aware of this prior to the activity actually beginning, not after it's already started and is, is, you know, already well down the road. So the two positions are the Relay for Life and the Giving Tree. Mr. McMahon has a little bit of background on that that he'll share with you, but I would be looking to add these stipends to make sure that the teachers are compensated for those roles.
Would you jump in, Brad?
Sure. So thank you, quick background. Some teachers approached me sometime, I want to say in January, February this year. And basically Relay for Life, I believe, is in the contract but has a $0 stipend attached. And Giving Tree, historically, I think fell under the umbrella of service learning. That's the background I learned most recently. That said, those are two fairly longstanding clubs, organizations. They meet after school hours, weekends, so on and so forth. I'm, I'm happy to go in more detail about what each club advisor does. But, you know, I, I think they both speak for themselves. Giving Tree's annual event, yes, it's December, but it really is a year-long thing. Relay for Life takes place in the spring, but again, fundraising organization takes place over the course of the academic year. So what I submitted to Mr. Morgan not that long ago was a request, again, per the union through dialogue with the union reps as well, to see to it that those stipend positions are commensurate with similar clubs after school activities. I believe in the denomination, I believe it was $895 per stipend. Again, it's my first foray in having to work with the union on stipends. Clearly, you know, I, I think that regardless of who's the position, the advisors for these groups do an awful lot of work and certainly don't want to break protocols or how this is done. But I wanted to advocate behalf of my teacher, that was really the crux of it, so. And just so the committees are aware, it has been shared with the association that moving forward, that the building reps bring it to the executive board and then the executive board would then bring it to central office for discussion that way prior to, you know, too much work being done. And that way we can be on the front end of it as opposed to, you know, being three quarters of the way through the school year and looking for stipended positions now. So that has been shared with them and hopefully that will be the practice moving forward.
Okay. Lisa, can you add your hand up?
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion that we make the Giving Tree and Relay for Life a stipend position at the high school.
Do you want to add an amount in there?
For 890, was that correct, for each position?
Tim, was it 890 or 895?
I'd have to look at the contract again, I'm sorry, it's one of those two. I mean, it's, I just chose the denomination based on the majority of other denominations. I think 895 to be exact, but I can look it up for you, there's no problem.
I think that's correct, Tim.
890?
It is. It is 895.
Okay, so it's 895 for the stipend positions of the Giving Tree and Relay for Life.
Is there a second? Somebody want a second?
Second.
June, second.
Okay. Was there anything else, Lisa, or just a motion?
Just a motion. I know that these, both positions are used a lot and they do great work for our school district.
Okay, Jess?
Why, if these are longstanding things, were they not in the budget? And why are we creating a stipend for them?
So it, it looks like previously the Giving Tree was part of another stipend. And for some reason, some, and I don't have the answer to it, Relay for Life is in the contract, but it has no money associated with it. So I'm not sure if that was an oversight. But it, it's that way in the previous contract. It's listed as a zero, a zero-funded club. So it's been identified, it's listed under stipends, but there is no money associated with it for some, for, for a reason I can't explain. I, I'm not sure how that happened.
Susan?
This, every time we negotiate the teacher's contract, stipends come up and it's asked, are there any other stipends? And the negotiation team from the association brings forth stipends. I agree, I mean, this Relay for Life and Giving Tree, it's been years and years and years that they have been going on. So I'm not sure why they haven't come forth. I believe it says in the contract, I have to go back and check, that before any new positions come up, it needs, it needs to come to the school committee first. I'm not sure how these two positions slipped through the cracks, because they're definitely not new.
And it's, Susan, it is my understanding and Tim's understanding that the, the Giving Tree was funded through the service learning previously. So it was funded, it's just not mentioned specifically in the contract.
Funded as far as they took one stipend and split it between two people or one person was taking care of both things?
Mr. McMahon, can you answer that question?
Yeah, historically in the contract, service learning was listed as having two advisors that covered NOLA and New York Service Learning. Since I've been at NM, we've had two advisors per NOLA and New York Service Learning sharing those two stipends. So essentially four folks taking the stipend for two. And at no time since I've been at North Middlesex has Giving Tree been associated with either of those groups. So it predates, you know, at least the fall of 2019 as to when Giving Tree kind of branched out and was a separate entity. But I do know that service learning, in a previous contract, Giving Tree fell under, under that umbrella. That's probably the best I have on that.
No, it's extremely important work. I guess it's the logistical part of it and being a part of negotiation discussions. Every, I've been a part of at least three or four contract negotiations over my history here. And every time the list comes up, the association brings forth positions, the school committee brings forth positions that we're aware of, whether the principals are making us aware of it or wherever it comes from. So it is disappointing. I agree, Tim, advocating for people that are doing good work in your building is an important thing to do, which is kind of a broader statement. It's important to bring these forward. New organizations definitely need to come through those channels.
Susan, being that we are the oldest serving members right now.
Longest serving, not oldest, thank you very much.
I was trying to look for the proper word there, oldest serving. Is, I, I'm wondering how much this has to do with way back when, when we had one teacher who was very overzealous and ran like 10 clubs. And I believe Relay for Life was one of them, the Giving Tree, Service Learning. And I wonder if it wasn't in the contract because it all fell under one umbrella. And then it, as it branched out when that teacher was no longer doing these, that it just never made it in under its own name. Okay, I do remember Relay for Life, the first year when it was under new advisors. And I remember there was, you know, big commotion because, you know, nobody knew what was going on because no one had ever done it before on that committee, including the advisors. So I'm, I'm wondering if this just kind of goes back to just a custom that was in place and just never got pulled out like it should have way back when. But the programs, you're right, have been around forever and they're great programs. And I know the students are very proud of these programs.
Yes.
So I would be in favor of these stipend positions in this case, but stressing what Susan was saying is for new clubs and organizations within the school district, we definitely need to make sure that we, we hold to the procedures that we have outlined in the teacher's contract. Was it all you had, Susan?
Sorry, yes, hands down.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Tom?
Yeah, just a quick question, is that, so I'm, and I might have missed it. Is it for, for this past year that we're talking about the stipend or are we talking about instituting it moving forward?
Good question.
It's, it's for the current year that we're in and then moving forward.
So just where, where is that money coming from, would be my follow-up to that?
So usually the, the hope is, is that money will come from any hiring that we do over the course of the summer. And, you know, if, if we have to potentially come to the committee to move funds out of, you know, transfer funds, something along those lines, that's something that we may have to do to get through the next contract. But generally speaking, I, I do think that we'll be in, in good shape to cover that just based on some hiring that we have going on for this current year into, into next year that we're hopefully going to realize some savings.
Thank you, yeah, I, I mean, I know, I know both and, I mean, they're, they're definitely, there's a lot of work involved. So thank you to, to the folks involved on that front.
Like I said, I can support this because it's such a long-running organization. But I know kids write their college essays about how much it's meant to them and how deeply it's affected them. I know it's important. I just want to stress how it needs to happen in the future to both the association and the administration. But because it's been so long, I can support it.
Anybody else? Okay, then I think we're ready to vote. Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. Yes, Tim, please thank the advisors for doing this to this point without the stipend and tell them to keep up the good work. It, it certainly is, those two are certainly shining stars within this district for what the students do.
Thank you as well. And I think it's a good refresher and stuff we can be doing communicating at the high school with the union on clubs as they get formed. We don't, you know, there's a process to form a club or an organization. So certainly we can work with the club advisors to ensure that they work with the union reps to make sure that they're speaking up when their club is ready to be stipended, if you will. So I appreciate the feedback.
Okay. Moving on to the interventionists and programming. Nancy?
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it right over to my elementary principals. I think Kate Kajeka is sharing her screen. And I also see Dr. Hanley on the call right now. Kate, would you like to take it from here?
A sec. I'm trying to find my screen, oh gosh. I think I already just messed it up.
All right, while you look at that, Kate. So all, all three of us met, Anne Pramel Gap and Kate and myself to discuss, you know, the presenting to the school committee. And we went over all of the things that we're all doing. And it made sense to put everything together and present it as, as one, you know, we, we try to be united in everything that we do. So with subtle differences at each elementary school, because they're three completely different schools. You know, we, we came up with this presentation. We won't go through every single thing on the slides because we don't want to bore you. But if you want more information, it certainly is there in terms of what the interventionists are doing on a daily basis. So Kate, I'll let you, I'll let you go ahead.
So when you look at the slides, you'll see that's broken down by each school, like Tara said. I think the overall premise of the presentation basically is that in all schools, we're providing interventions for the students in what they need, kind of formerly known as our win block in the different schools. Now we do it as part of the EL curriculum, we have time built into that schedule. And the services that we give the kids, it's finding them where they are and then helping them move forward, whether they are at grade level, whether they're a little bit behind grade level and just giving them the supports they need to either excel forward, basically. I'm trying to move forward and now I'm frozen again. Oh, there we go. You can see on the slides too, that we've had a lot of success with the presentation, I'm sorry, with the services that we're delivering to the kids at all three schools where they're receiving the interventions and they are moving out. So they're not what formerly used to be called kind of like lifers in Title I. They're getting these short- They're getting these short, like eight week intervention sessions. And then when they're demonstrating that they've met the skill that we're teaching, we're able to move them back into the regular groupings with the kids or keep them if we're going to work on another skill, but we also have room to add more kids in. And I think one of the features that we really like about having the interventionists in the school and having the time that we do this year is that we're able to use enrichment opportunities as well. So it's not just remediation and intervention for kids that are struggling, but we definitely have opportunities to move some kids into a different direction that we might not have necessarily had easily access to in the past. I mean, I can keep taking you through, but it's the same thing that you guys are going to be looking at.
I think they can look at that themselves. I mean, it is, but it really does mirror what is going on in the classroom.
Absolutely.
We just figured that you would want to see that, that this is what they are working on. You know, in kindergarten, when you're concentrating on getting kids to read, you know, you, you start with, with what they need, letter sound recognition. They make everything fun. There are smaller increments of time that the interventionists are working with these very small groups. And so we're seeing that even though this, it kind of did replace, if I can use that, Title One, because we have more people, more staff members at each building than we did with Title One, they're able to see more kids, they are able to see students at every grade level, which we thought was key, especially coming out of the last couple of years because there are gaps and there are kids who were in school, out of school, you know, receiving schooling in lots of different ways, and now they're all back in our buildings. So everybody's at a different spot. So, you know, we really do value it. At Barnum, we have five interventionists. So we are servicing kids in grades K through four in English Language Arts and in some, in lots of cases in mathematics also, because there is so much language in our math programs. So they are utilized from the start of the day to the end of the day. And that is another one of the differences between for the interventionists and Title One. They are full year employees. And so, you know, Title One used to end, you know, 15 days before the end of the school year. Our interventionists are there full time. So we really do value their help.
And we're fortunate and Spalding, we have four interventionists. And it's really made such an impact on the, the students and the teachers because then the teachers can also, you know, have a small group, the interventionists have a small group, and the kids can kind of cycle through, which has been really helpful too. So they get, you know, the teaching of these skills that they're working on from both providers, whether it's the teacher or the interventionist. It's great. Taking you some more. I don't know if there's specific questions about the intervention. It's just been a fantastic year of using these providers. And I think Tara and Ann would both agree with that. It's, it's been awesome.
And I don't think Ann was able to join us tonight, but I believe that they have two up at Ashley Elementary? Or is it one and a half, Nancy? One and a half? She has one, okay.
Now, is this, these are brand new, this is a brand new program in the school? Or has this just been expanded with COVID?
It is new this year that, that we have interventionists. We don't have Title One staff anymore, or right now, we don't have Title One staff. They're, they're new. The description of the job was, was changed. And so, you know, we hired, you know, they all had to be certified teachers. And we were lucky actually to find, for us, to find five people before the start of the school year. And they have been instrumental in helping kids, all of our students and, and our teachers. You're right, Kate.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. And there's a lot of flexibility too on this one here, the fourth grade. In fourth grade at our school, our interventionists do more push-in. So they're in the classroom where the younger grades, they might, because of the attention or because of the skills that they're working for, working on, they might pull them out into the hallway or into a small group in the back of the room. So there's a lot of flexibility with how we are able to present the support to the kids, which I think is fantastic as well. Susan, you have a question? Am I supposed to say that?
What does push-in mean?
Oh, they go into the classroom with the teachers.
Oh, I'm sorry. I took people at once. I didn't quite catch it.
They go into the classroom with the teachers and the kids. They're all in there. So there's like two adults and then the kids.
Got it.
I'm very happy that we are finding success with this, with the kids. Now, is this something that after the ESRA money runs out? I know we're using a lot of the ESRA money for these interventionists. That if we get Title One money, that we might be able to have something similar going forward in this model? Or would it go back to what we've done before?
So ESRA is supporting our interventionists for the three years that we have the grant. Currently, there is some supplementation with Title One funds, but our Title One grant usually runs anywhere between 150 and $350,000, depending on whether or not we are above or below the 5% overall poverty rate. This, this past year, we actually were in the warning category that we were said that we were going to lose our funding. But ESRA is supplementing these positions at the middle and elementaries because the interventionists are costing about $800,000. So we are far away from keeping these services in the future without a lot of support.
Well, I'm hoping the number of students that need these services is going to go down once we get past the period of time that COVID affected the children, that we can get them back on track. So I didn't know if a smaller version of this with what we typically have with the kids that need the extra help, if this is a different model than we've used in the past, if it's something to be used forward, going forward.
The intervention block model will continue and we will support to the best of our abilities through Title One and our local funding.
And then we just, we did just include the standards that they're all working on. They're, they're the standards that all of our teachers, all of our staff are working on. Just in case you had a question about, you know, a particular grade level or what they, what they were working on. But, you know, we, we, we do value their, their contribution certainly. And, you know, I guess I did say that our, I, I can't understate that our classroom teachers very much like the support and like the fact that they can refer a student who might need this much help on one particular thing, and they can go with the interventionist, you know, master that skill and then come right back to the other group. It's a, it's just a, it's a really good model. A few years ago, when we went to, when we were doing Title One and we had, went to the school-wide model, it gave us much more flexibility in terms of getting kids, individual students, what they needed. And this is, this has really kind of solidified that, that model with our, with our whole staff.
Yeah. Yep.
Lisa?
So kids can step in and out anytime during the year to the intervention, correct?
And we see a lot of that in and out, depending on what they're working on in the classroom.
I think it looks great. You guys have implemented it well. Thank you.
We have great teams. We're very lucky.
Yeah, we are lucky.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation and updating us on what's going on in the districts. Happy that we're able to have a program and get the kids back on track.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Townsend Rec Facility Use, Brad. I contacted, tried contacting Craig to find out what the discussion needed to be. And I was not successful in figuring that out. I'm not sure, something just to put off until Craig is back.
Sure. So I can cover that really quickly because I think Nancy had a question. But this was actually an agenda item that someone from the Townsend Rec Commission asked to have put on the agenda, and I do not see that person here. I believe it may have been, the situation may have been solved, so I think we're okay. But I do not see the individual on the call right now. So let me double check in the other one. No, we don't have that individual here. So it was a request that was put out to Craig from a member of the Townsend Rec Commission, and that person is not here. So I think we can bypass that.
We'll bypass that. And then moving right along, we have subcommittee reports. Lisa Martin, do you have anything?
I think you have to come back to the middle, middle school interventionist.
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Go on.
This is Young, no, Mr. Webster. Is someone going to present?
Yes, I think we're looking for.
Oh, there you go.
Presentation. There we go.
So we're going to talk a little bit about the middle school intervention blocks, which is slightly different than the elementary school model. Not being a Title One school, either Hawthorne Brook or Nissett-Isidore, we've never had those supports in place and we have been so grateful for it this year. So our goal this year was to create dedicated time in our schedule for students to receive remedial instruction or enrichment. And we call this time Patriot Time. We didn't want to call it intervention block in a middle school, you know, because of the stigma attached to it. So we call it Patriot Time for all of the grades and it's caught on. I think the kids, you know, like that, that name. So we're going to go with it. We're going to stick with that. And so all students in our school, grades five through eight, have a minimum of two blocks per week dedicated to intervention. Each grade level has two teams and we have our team intervention blocks at the same time. So this provides us with a nice time to use our resources that are attached to that team. And it also gives us flexibility so that the whole school does not have intervention at the same time. So we can use our people as we need to throughout the building. And we've created our schedule to accommodate this.
Okay, so I had to unmute myself, excuse me. Some activities that you might see taking place during Patriot Time at the middle school level are things like our iReady program for math and literacy, reteaching core content material in small groups, pre-teaching the core content material, also extending any activities or lessons that were occurring in classes using that extra time, vocabulary building activities, spiraling, kind of going back to some previously taught things or reviewing materials, also team-based meetings with students. Whenever something arises that needs to be attended to directly, we, we use that time. So. Next slide.
We do have two interventionists in our building. We have a math interventionist and then we also have a literacy interventionist. And they work with students in both the pull-out settings, so in a small group, but they also support teachers in the classroom. And that's really worked out very well throughout the year. Some kids, similar to what the elementary school shared, we have some students who are in there more often. And then we have others that might just be in there to learn a skill and then they, they head back into their team area. So it is very flexible. And we wanted to share a little bit of data with you. So one of the tools that we have is iReady. And this is a computer program for math and for literacy. And it's a way for us to gauge the progress our students are making. So the, all students in each grade, they take a diagnostic at the beginning of the year. So they took it in September, then they took a mid-year diagnostic in January, and then they'll take another in June before the school year ends. And this is a way for us to assess their growth throughout the year. And it's just one tool, but it's a really nice tool that we can use because once the students take the diagnostic, the program will tell us what areas the student needs more work in. And it will provide us with resources that we can use to accomplish that. And the kids can either use, a teacher could teach the lessons or they can use the computer to teach the lessons. So we've been very happy with, with this program. So the data you see here on this first chart is related to just math. And this is for students who were below benchmark. So that's who we're taking into account for this first chart. You can see on the left-hand side, that was the 2020 year where we were using iReady, but we didn't have dedicated Patriot Time. So previously, teachers had this program and they could use it in there, here and there, but we didn't have dedicated time. And the column to the right, you see now that we have dedicated time, we have our Patriot Time, that this is where, this is what the students are doing. So the numbers here are reflected from our January assessment, which is mid-year. So at that time, we would expect students to be at about a 50% growth. And as you see here, that our students were very much above that. So grade five, the GB stands for grade bands. So students who were one grade level behind had 58% growth in fifth grade. Students that were two grade bands behind had 64% growth. So we would expect them to be at 50. You see eighth grade, they were at 133% of their growth, which is just truly tremendous. And then on the far right, you can see the change from not having intervention blocks to having intervention blocks. And I will share that the, the fifth grade, the two you can see, the negative 25 and negative 60. I'm sure your eyes went right to that. So I just want to explain that we pinpoint that right down to a unit on fractions that students were originally taught during the COVID shutdown. And so that skill was not solidified with those students. But that's something that we've had to go back and reteach and provide students extra instruction on that. So this tool was able to identify that. The bottom chart shows math improvement. And this measures the percentage of students who were able to move up one grade band, two grade bands, or three grade bands. So you see here, we've had, again, really nice progress with the exception of that grade five. But we are working on that. So we're going to see some changes in that as we go forward for the next time. And these charts show the same information, but in regard to reading. So we can see that now that we have our intervention blocks, that students are making tremendous progress. On the top, you would think 50% would be our, our benchmark. And we're at over 100% for many of our, our subgroups. And then at the bottom is the growth that our students have made in reading with the intervention blocks. So again, these are only students who are below benchmarks. And I can tell you, like, the, the reading, like in grade seven, the second chart, you see negative four, negative 20. That is due to the, the nature of the, certain special education subgroups that are very, very small. And, and that's why you see some negative numbers there. But again, these are just students who are below grade level. So if we go to the next chart, this gives you an overall picture. This is all students at both Nissett-Isidore and Hawthorne Brook together. So you see the progress that our students are making. All students, whether they were above, below, and the, the positive change from not having Patriot Time to Patriot Time. So, so we're very encouraged by the data that we're seeing. That, you know, it's great to hear teachers say, you know, that we're making a difference, that the kids are learning, that they see it in the classroom. But it's also nice to have the data to back it up and to say, okay, yes, we are making progress. Our students are, are learning. And we feel that this data is able to show that.
Okay, some other activities that would occur during this Patriot Time. We do have creative writing activities, STEM activities. So we're actually taking advantage of the time for our new STEM program. Social, emotional learning lessons as well. Our school counselors have been, as you can imagine, very busy supporting kids over the past couple of years. And so this time gives them an opportunity also, when appropriate, to work with students with their social, emotional learning. That wraparound support at home. A lot of times, if there are concerns involving, you know, student attendance and the things that are going on outside of school with our kids, our counselors and our support staff are able to use that time appropriately to work with students and, and provide that kind of support. We also use the time for lessons with math and literacy interventionists. We also use the time for lessons with math and literacy interventionists. Our interventionists use the time to pull students out and work with them in particular areas of need, along with the fact that they're able to get into classrooms as well and work with the teachers. And we also use the time for extensions and enrichment activities as well. And I think that might be the end of our slideshow. So at this point, I think Lauren, and I can take questions from anybody.
Do they have any comments or questions? I'd just like to add, you know, again, it sounds like a great use of the interventionists at the middle school. And I'm glad that it's helping the students. And hopefully we won't have, you know, another situation like we have and we can learn from this and how to incorporate it when we don't have the interventionists anymore. And then we can find ways to keep some of this positive momentum going. So thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, you have your hand up?
I was, my understanding is these positions are covered with funds that are coming from the government outside of the district and the towns to provide interventionists to help with the loss of learning, I guess is the best way to say it, during the COVID. Do we see this as something that will continue? Well, we have benefited from this prior to COVID, I guess. Or there has been less of a need for it prior to COVID? Is that, I don't know if that makes any sense.
I think the need has always been there, but it's greater certainly right now. It's certainly, it's remarkably greater. And luckily, you know, the way it's structured, we have a fade-out program so that we have, we have two interventionists at each middle school. And we can, next year, we'll continue to have two interventionists. The year after, it will go down to one. So it gives us some time to work with them and to build in other structures and see what we can do with that. But I think, you know, I wish we had been able to do this years ago. It's really been tremendous.
Yeah, I agree with Lauren. I think that the situation we've had with the pandemic over the past couple of years has really allowed us to highlight something that's already been there. But also now that we have the funds to be able to do something about it, it also helps us as far as how we organize and frame that time with our kids. So it's not just a study hall. Now it's something that we're really utilizing and taking advantage of the support staff that we have in our schools.
And when we think about the total picture, you've heard us talk about over the years, that we want a solid Tier One curriculum and then we want good Tier Two interventions. And ESAR funds are supporting both those initiatives. Bringing in a new ELA program and then next year, a new math program for those Tier One curriculum resources that are research-based and vetted through EdReports, along with good Tier Two interventions to help promote students getting back into Tier One instruction, like you heard the elementary principals talk about effectively in these short bursts. So hopefully, the combination of these funds over the next three years will help bolster both Tier One and Tier Two resources and needs.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you again for taking the time to do the presentation for us. Now we'll move on to subcommittee reports, if I didn't miss anything else. Lisa, on accelerated repairs, are there any update?
Nancy Haynes got the update that the closeout looks like it's happening at the end of the month. So we're very excited about that. So we'll see if it's going to come true or not, but we're hoping.
Great. I haven't heard anything about the building committee. Anything on finance, Lisa?
We continue to work on the budget and the capital plan. We do need to set up our meeting with the finance committee from Ashby or the finance and the Ashby selectmen. And we'll probably do that after town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Negotiation personnel, Tom, any updates?
No, we are good on my end.
Policy, as you see, there are a number of policies. These are all for adoption, for a second reading. I believe it was one through five, we had approved for a first reading at our March 7th meeting. And the remainder of them were for a first reading at our March 21st meeting. So I will read the large list that somebody can, second after I am done. So I move that the school committee approved for adoption. Policy EBAB pet pest management. Policy DIE-1 regional school district audits. Policy DJ purchasing. Policy DK-1 regional school district payment procedures. Policy DKC expense reimbursements. Policy DBJ-1 regional school district budget transfer authority. Policy DJE procurement requirements. Policy JLCA physical examinations and mandatory health screenings for students. Policy DA fiscal management goals. Policy DB-1 regional school district annual budget. Policy DBD budget planning. Policy DBG-1 regional school district budget adoption procedures. Policy DD funding proposals and applications. Policy DGA-1 regional school district authorized signatures. And policy DI fiscal accounting and reporting. Who says second?
June.
Okay. I'd like to also just remind everybody that any of the dash one policies on here, when we did it for our first reading, upon adoption, the non-dash one, so like DIE-1, if there was a DIE that is being discontinued and pulled as a policy, as the dash one is the new MASC designation for a regional school district for that policy. So are there any questions or comments about any of these policies? Okay, then we will go ahead and vote. Sorry, what was that? Okay, Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So they all pass. Thank you, everyone. I don't know of any other business, unless somebody needs to bring something up now. And then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.